Welcome back to Strategic Moves. I'm your host, Ken Dow. This is a show where we're not afraid to ruffle a few little feathers and speak truth to power. And we're gonna do that straight with no chaser today. And we're doing that with a young woman who's coming on our program. That we're gonna talk a little bit about this generational gap between my generation, which is generation, I think I'm Generation X, right?
Okay.
I'm Generation X, and we're going after a generation, those millennials. I think that's where it is, is those millennials. Hey, I didn't, if you've been following my show, I did a show where I talked about those damn millennials, and I did it with a couple of brothers. This time, I got a sister at the table. And we're gonna talk a little bit about what it is and this gap we have and with the difference between our ideologies of how we see life sometimes. So, we're gonna do that with a young woman by the name of Ms. Lauren Welch. Lauren has been in the trenches from Hollywood to Cleveland pushing narratives and shaking up county council boardrooms. And she's been doing that from a position of running her own business today as a consulting firm and marketing agency. And she started here in Cleveland, went to Hollywood, did her thing in Hollywood. Now she's back here in Cleveland with her own agency. And she's gonna talk to us a little bit more about what they're doing and how her experiences is what guides her today to do what she does today. Without further ado, let's welcome Ms. Lauren Welch to our program.
I am so delighted to be here with you.
I'm glad you came in. I'm glad to have this conversation. I did a show where I called it "Me and These Damn Millennials."
We're not so bad. We all right.
Yeah, I, you know what, I'm getting the chance to work with you guys a little bit more because I ain't got no choice.
No, you don't. You don't, at this point, no.
We don't have no choice, so either we gonna get with it or we gonna get left behind. So, I have chose to really have these conversations with millennials and people to talk about what's going on and how we can bridge the gap and that kinda thing. So, like we do in most of our programs, Lauren, why don't you give us a little background? Where you grew up at here in Cleveland? And tell us how you got from Cleveland to Hollywood?
So, I'm a Cleveland native. I grew up in Ohio City and spent the majority of my childhood there before going to Wittenburg. And then, right after I crossed the stage at Wittenburg, I was on the next flight out, literally a week later, where I got my first job in public relations. And I spent a number of years in Los Angeles working on lifestyle, entertainment, PR, until I just decided that it was important for me to come back home and do this work.
So, a lot of, we gotta slow down a little bit now. How did you say when I crossed the stage, I went to Hollywood? How did that happen? Well, you know, you just, you know what, I'm going to Hollywood.
No, I knew some good people out there. And I was actually spending some time there, some summers before.
Okay.
And I grew up on, I don't know, Laguna Beach. See, that's a millennial thing. Laguna Beach was a show that came on.
So, definitely, I didn't remember.
The OC was a show that came on.
I didn't watch it, but I did remember hearing that.
College Hill.
Remember College Hill?
Okay, so they, I was watching all those shows. And I was like, you know what? There were a couple of people on those shows who worked in lifestyle and entertainment and worked in public relations. And I had been winning speech competitions in high school. Yeah. And some of those speech competitions took me out to Los Angeles. And so, I wrote for the high school newspaper. I wrote plays. I was winning competitions. And so, I had a lot of good mentors who were like, "You are really good at this." And I originally was gonna go into broadcast journalism, but I was realizing they don't make a lot of money in that. I switched to being a journalism and comms major. And there were some people who wrote for major shows, like West Wing, who introduced me to the life of PR. And next thing, I had a job working in PR. And after I crossed that stage, I was on the next flight out a week later.
What was the thing that surprised you most when you came back home?
I think we definitely are a segregated city. I hate to say that.
No, wasn't it like that when you left?
I think as a child, you don't recognize. I don't think you have the language for that. And also, no, I wouldn't have recognized it because I went, I'm a CMSD graduate. I went to majority black schools growing up.
Even though it was on the west side.
Even though it was on the west side. Most, the west side was majority black and brown. Ohio City was black and brown.
Wow.
For a very long time. And no, I didn't experience any, at least any PWIs until I got to undergrad. And then, once I got to LA, it's a melting pot. You have people who are AAPI, Hispanic, Latinx, Black, Brown, all across the diaspora.
Okay.
And moving back, I would go to the grocery store, I'm like, "Where are we at?" No, I, I didn't really, I didn't see that growing up. But when I moved back as an adult, after spending a lot of time in LA and growing up, seeing the majority Black and Brown people, no, I didn't experience such segregation until I moved back. And then, I noticed some of the disparities that existed. And I think most people would argue that. I think you don't have the language and the context for that when you're a child. And then, you get older and your eyes are a little bit more open.
What was the biggest change you saw? Describe it like in Ohio City, growing up versus now.
Again, I saw a lot of people who looked like me. And so, when you talk about culture and growing up in the culture, it's everything from the culture shifting around your hair. If, your mom and your dad will teach you how to do that, but also, you go over to your best friend's house, they teach you how to do it too. You got a teacher that's Black, so she fixing your hair in class. But also, I have a really good understanding of where I come from because I had Black and Brown teachers. So, it wasn't just like the cultural spaces that judgment about who I am. It's also the academic spaces. And I think it was great growing up and having Black and Brown teachers.
Okay.
And now, I think that we need more Black and Brown teachers. But again, in my community, it was mixed. And now, it's, Ohio City isn't as mixed anymore. I still love it. I live around the corner from Ohio City. I live downtown. And I still see my people. It has changed, a lot of development, a lot of just.
Do you think it's, they call it gentrification?
I think there's development. I would hope that people weren't displaced in the process of that. We could definitely use more Black and Brown folks in Ohio City. I assure you that.
It has changed quite a bit because of the restaurants and all of this stuff that's over there. And they got a lot of big apartment buildings and things over there that they say that most of the people in that community can't afford those type of. It's getting very expensive over there. But I think with new construction and new build, that's what ended up happening. It's just, to your point, is the displacement of others. That I haven't heard anybody that says it, but I don't live there, so I really don't know.
And that's why I said, I wouldn't quite say it was displacement. I think over a period of time, with the more development and prices getting high with rent, taxes go up, people found other places to live. When I had joined 100 Black Women a while ago, they were like, "Black girl from Ohio City." Because you know, most of us are on the east side.
Exactly, exactly.
But that's just historical. I think that people, a lot of my friends have gotten older. They've moved from the west side, have their families living on the east side. So, I think a lot of us wanna be more around our people as we get older.
So, you think that's why people left Ohio City?
No, I definitely think that there was a lot of development that was going on. And so, people were getting bought out of their homes. People were. When I grew up, I couldn't even ride my bike down the street because I was, it was a mixed income neighborhood. And so, I was, we were going through hispo, no, excuse me, historical homes to halfway houses. It was a blended community.
Really?
And so, that's just what you get. That's why I'm not afraid of my city. When people are like, "Why are these unhoused people?" I'm like, "This is their city too. They belong here also." I'm used to that. I don't think a lot of people are used to that when they moving in from Lorraine or North Olmstead and things like that. And so, what you get is a lot of the property taxes becoming high. Apartments are getting high on the west side. Again, I believe in development without displacement. And so, I love going to the restaurants there. Again, I'm a huge advocate for Ward 3. But I do think a lot, I would love to see more of us moving into Ohio City and downtown.
What do you think is the difference between the east side and the west side?
There's more of us on the east side, for sure. But I also think that, I think the west side has had more opportunities. Even now, with Mayor Bibb, I love that we are emphasizing the southeast side. That the southeast side hasn't gotten a lot of love. There are parts of the east side that are still a food desert that need a lot of money, access, opportunities. And I love that we have a mayor that is prioritizing that and not just prioritize the dollars in downtown and the near west side. So, I think that we could definitely use more love in different spaces besides the west side. The west side was just getting a lot of income, and for a very long time. And so, that shows.
And planning.
And planning, yes.
I think one of the biggest issues that the east side faces is that they lack of planning and getting things done. So, I think where you had on the west side, you had more development corporations and people with ideas to do it. One of the things that we tell most people that, and you know this yourself from coming from a development in, is that a development project takes a long time in order to get it done. So, the planning portion of a project, like all the stuff we talk about with Ohio City, it just didn't happen in a year or two. That, that was probably 10, 15 years of actual planning saying that at one day, we're going to start revamping this whole community.
It was happening while I was growing up. And then, I would have been away for about 10, 15 years. And then, I came back, and I was like, "What is this? This is, this is different." But I agree with you. Again, they've, they, it does require a lot of planning. And the west side was able to get way more planning. But I do see some planning happening on the east side now, which is great to see. But they could also use a lot more love in those spaces.
That's correct. So, rebuilding your networks, you're speaking about coming back to Cleveland. You had to rebuild your network and kinda that going. Did you get hit with that Cleveland freeze where you come back and, "These folks here, there's some haters in this town." We was just sitting here talking about that. And I was just telling that, you have, we just have straight up people. I think it's because we're such a small community that we feel like we eat crabs in a barrel sometimes. So, how was it coming back and you dealing with the, coming in and having to deal with my generation as we talk about it? How you felt about, did you get the freeze? Or was we welcoming you to come on in and show us some love?
I'll say this, again, because I had to rebuild my networks. When I came back, I had some people who re-acclimated me, which was really great. I think, I think it is a little difficult when you come here and you don't know anybody. I knew some people from undergrad who, being in a central Ohio school, kind of welcomed me back. And so, that was pretty great. But also, I wasn't really a threat at 23 years old. I was still trying to make my come up. So, it was a lot of old heads who didn't mind mentoring. But over time, you move up. And I think that's when you start seeing some of the, as you call it, freeze that takes place because you're now in a lot more spaces. A lot more people see you getting a lot more shine. And I think that any individual, no matter what space you're in, industry you're in, city you're in, I think it's important to recognize who your people are. I've had to change my people many times, three times over, as I've gotten older over the last 10 years living in Cleveland, only because what worked in one season doesn't work in the other.
So, let's talk about that on that point. You said, "Change your people." What you mean by that?
I just, you, Michelle Obama always say, "You can't take everybody with you." And there's some people who have given me hate for that. "Oh, Lauren does that. She don't be, she don't be..." Yeah, I don't put up with any.
You'll cut them off.
Yeah, I don't put up with BS. And I don't think you can put up with BS when you are trying to really create change, when you're really trying to stand on business, when you really are trying to make an impact. And when you're younger, when you're an undergrad, a lot of your community is probably surrounded by people who just happen to be in proximity to you, right? So, when I moved back, I just happened to be around people who were my age, who liked going out. As I got older, going out wasn't something that was a priority to me. It's not a priority to me. I love to go out and kick it with my friends, but there's more at stake now. And so, there's some people who still haven't changed since then. So, I had to change. The other side of that is, speaking of generations, is you end up at the same table with people who were making decisions about your life when you were younger. And they're like, "Who's this young whippersnapper? Who does she think she is?" And I think that happens in many spaces where there's a generation of individuals who are like, "Where did these young folks come from?" And we're watching it. We're watching before our eyes how millennials have come up. Our mayor is a millennial. We're not young professionals anymore. I'm a millennial. I'm not on the city council. I'm not in that boardroom, but I'm on the RTA board. I'm on three other boards. I'm leading a business. I'm at an organization. And so, a lot of people's lives depend on the decisions that I make and the rooms that I'm in. Sometimes, when you push back, people don't always think that you should have a voice as someone who is in their late 30s. And I've just had to navigate around that. I've had to put on my big girl pants and say, "God brought me here for a reason." But the freeze happens at different points of your life. I could, would talk to some people, generations that are your age. And sometimes, they feel like we don't do enough connecting to them as well. But I'm always here for bridging the gap.
I was gonna, we gonna move into this next section. And I guess it's like, you ever wonder who's hold, you ever wonder who's pulling the strings behind community movements? And the hint is that it ain't always the person who's holding the microphone. I had a question in that, that you wore a lot of hats. I said, "It's more than most women on an Easter Sunday." You did a lot of things in your career, publicist, strategist, activist. I wanna break down this publicist, truly shaping narratives behind community change. When you get into that, tell us about a project like Enlightened Solutions and Project Noir. What's really the impact behind it? We had the young ladies on here from Project Noir at one time. So, talk to me about this Enlightened Solutions and your involvement with that. And we could talk about the, I'll let you talk about the women some more.
Sure. I'm sure that if you watched that episode, they were, they're obviously the experts in their work because they do it very well. They are just one of the clients that I've had over the last 10 years. But I remember it, you know, being a part of Enlightened Solutions was instrumental because it was, when I was working with them, they were at ground zero. They needed to build network. They needed to build capital. They needed to get dollars. And so, what I do with a lot of organizations is I come in, I connect the dots. Get the word out about their organizations and other people's organizations, the work that they're doing. I really try to stand by people whose work I believe in because it seems as though every, people who are really doing the work don't get enough shine. And then, you got everybody else who's trying to hop on a platform with nothing to say. So, the great part about the work I do as a publicist, I feel like I get to elevate people. And so, Enlightened Solutions was just one of those people, one of those organizations that I got to come in, connect the dots with them. They got some of their first seed money through some connections I made for them. And I'm grateful for the work that they're doing. They've gone on to do Project Noir, which I helped with in the beginning before moving on to other projects. But they're just an example of using your political and social capital to elevate other people. And so, I think I've always had that mentality that it's important to lift as you climb. I just happy to do it through my expertise, through being a publicist. And I'm always happy to do it.
How does your background in PR influence your fight on biases and microaggressions behind the scenes?
Ooh, Ken is coming with the questions today. My mentors will always say that I'm very fiery. I think I'm less fiery as I get older. Or I would say I use my fire in ways that are more productive. I'll say that. As a publicist, I think it's time and place is important. Who you say things to are important. And so, as a publicist, I always like to say, "I'm my own best publicist" because I'm always thinking about, I'm trying to be intentional about how I'm showing up. So, in the personal and the professional, I think being a publicist, for better or for worse, has shaped me in that I'm consistently thinking about how I'm showing up in spaces and want other people to be intentional about how they show up with me also. How they speak to me, how I speak to them, the work I do for them, the work they might be doing for me. I think that's important. I think that is an important part of how we build community. And you could take the PR out of it. I just think that for someone who believes in community and believes in liberation of our community, I think that's important. I think people are not intentional enough how they show up in spaces. And so, that's how I handle the bias. That's how I handle pushback. That's how I handle feedback, is I'm consistently trying to think about the shoe on the other foot. Think about my own space in conversations and then what people might be bringing to the conversation. I think we all have something that we can add. But again, intentionality for me is very important in these spaces because I think a lot of the burnt bridges, what I've learned over the years, and I don't know if you can attest to this, is really because folks, it's missed conversations. It's conversations that weren't had. It's the recklessness that we've had with how we've built relationships. And so, as I've gotten older, I've tried to be really intentional about how I show up because it's all we have.
How you think a person should deal with that kinda thing? Somebody who is really hard on them on the job and they feeling these microaggressions from their employer or somebody? How you think a person should, have you had that experience yourself?
Oh, absolutely.
Give me an example of how you had to deal with it.
I have to say, when I was coming up in marketing agencies, it was a bunch of white guys.
Okay.
And looking at them and learning from them, they handled things very differently than how we would probably handle them. It was like Mad Men. People didn't mince words when they were in disagreements. There were chairs being thrown and people arguing across the table. As getting older, there's still a little of that, some of that still in me. But again, I'm very intentional about how I show up in that way. I think sometimes with individuals who are not able to, what do you say? You don't teach, it's hard to teach an old dog new tricks. Sometimes, I have to put on my big girl pants and be like, "Something about this ain't kosher." And I have to use my full voice to let them know what they're doing is not okay. And a lot of that comes from watching people just say the words, which I think is hard for, I gotta tell you, when I'm working with Black and Brown clients, very hard to do. Like, a lot of people are very, when I keep telling people, I'm like, "You have to say the things. You have to say the words. You have to advocate for yourself." That's very hard for a lot of us to do. And I don't know if that's because we don't see a lot of that or we don't see how that can happen in a way that's productive, but.
Give me an example of what you mean by that.
That, I think we're very forgiving people for better or for worse. We've been taught to keep our head down.
Okay.
Even with my mom, dad, grandparents, when I would have struggles in the worst place, in the workplace, they would just be like, "Girl, just keep your head down. You gotta just get through it. You gotta..." Which works in some circumstances, but when people's lives are on the line, that doesn't work. Or when I'm in the boardroom and there are really important decisions that are being made and people are coming from spaces of racism or sexism or misogyny, I can't stand for that. And I come from generations of people who were told to keep your head down.
So, do you think, do you think it's easier to have those conversations now? Racism and sexism in the workplace versus back then?
No, I don't. I still think, no, I think we're still struggling because I think people, especially now, I mean, with, under this administration, with people's jobs being on the line, people are trying to do everything they can to keep their security. And so, it becomes harder to speak up about the disparities that are happening in workplaces when you feel like there's nothing, there's nothing holding your feet at the bottom. When there doesn't feel like there's any job security. I happen to just be speaking up because I come from that space and I actually happen to have some job security through owning my own business. But it's not, it doesn't get any easier. And also, there's a lot of labor, emotional labor, that comes with having to tell people what you just said is racist. There's a lot of emotional labor that comes with having to explain to individuals, even Black men. Like, even though you might be Black, what if you're participating in something that's misogynist? What if you're saying something that's misogynist? Sometimes, that's really a really hard conversation to have if people are not open to those conversations. And no, in Cleveland, Ohio, those conversations are very hard because we live in a red state that does not tend to care about women. We live in a state that has mostly upheld white supremacy. And when you're in these spaces like Cleveland, which again, I'm not saying that any city, other city doesn't deal with this, what I am saying is, it's a little different in LA when it's a melting pot and you're seeing Black and White people and Latinx people everywhere. Whereas here, the workspaces are mostly predominantly white. The boardrooms are predominantly white, even though we're a Black city. No, it has not gotten easier for us in this particular city because we still are not occupying spaces of power in this space. And we need more of us in these spaces in order to even have productive conversations. It can't be just me and Enlightened Solutions out there, is what I'm trying to say. It can't just be me and you.
Exactly, exactly. They say Cleveland is progressive. But do calling out toxicity, toxicity, you know how to say that word?
Toxicity, yeah.
Toxicity, thank you for that. Still feels dangerous here.
Yes.
And you stated Cleveland is more conservative than what we think.
Yes.
So, what's the real deal? Are we progressive or just pretending?
I think we, I think if you really look at it, I think most people who think that they're liberal in Cleveland are actually mostly in the middle. Lot of Black folks were born and raised in the church. Lot of white folks moving in who haven't unpacked the ways in which they uphold white supremacy. I wanna say all this to say that I love my city. I love Cleveland. I'm ride or die for Cleveland. But I also believe in what James Baldwin would always say, "In order to love you, I have to also acknowledge some of the harm that you've caused along the way."
That's correct.
I'm paraphrasing, but I love this city so much that even as someone who is considering whether I spend the next 10 years here, 20 years here, I'm thinking about, "Oh, my God, is this a space that I wanna continue to be in if I have to fight everybody?" Or do I just keep my head down?
No, you definitely can't keep your head down. You know what, y'all ain't gonna keep your head down.
I think we're trying.
I don't know.
I think we're collectively, I think, I, I see the effort, I'll tell you that. But we need more voices at the table to say, "It ain't kosher. Something ain't kosher."
Why you think it's so hard for people to call out the abuse and power in workplace here? Why is it so hard?
Because we are a small, big city. I think we have witnessed people get blacklisted. We have watched people get kept from opportunities just from speaking up about some of the issues that they're having with some of these systems in these spaces. And so, what that does is create a culture of silence and fear. And I don't think that is from one generation. I think it's multi-generational. I think it's, I've talked to people from different backgrounds, different ages who have struggled with that. And that's really hard to, from a city that you love, that's very hard. Because how do we move the needle forward if we can't, if we're afraid to call out injustices? If we're afraid to call out disparities, you know, are affecting people? And so, yeah, it's difficult.
Do you think Clevelanders confuse personal relationship with person, with, let's do it again. Do you believe Clevelanders confuse personal relationships with professional accountability?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And what I wanna say to that is, I'll give you a really good example of that. The reason why I think that I'm able to speak to how we hold people accountable is because I think people are coming to me all the times about the district. As somebody who works in education, they're coming to me all the time about transit. As people who need to get to their bus stops on time. And so, I'm not shy, when I say, there's people who will hit me up on Twitter or hit me up via text and be like, "Where's my bus?" And because I care about this work, I don't, I'm not taking it personally. In fact, I love when people hit me up about what's going on in their schools, what's Saygas or what's happening with transit, because it says to me that they care. I have witnessed some leaders, when they're getting called out about the decisions that they make, take it very personally. And here's the thing, I understand why they're taking it personally is because they pour a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into their work. None of us should not be without any kind of checking or accountability. And everybody is gonna get chin-checked at some point in time, right? It just depends on your day. But what I've witnessed is people who get chin-checked and cannot hold a mirror up. And I do think it's because professionally, when we're saying, "Hey, we don't know if that decision you made was in the best interest of the community," they take it so personally that they're like, "We don't want that person to ever talk again." "Oh, that person is always bringing up the problems. That person is always having an issue."
Always got an issue.
But how come nobody has listened to those issues? How come we aren't taking those issues more seriously? How come we are burying those issues? And then, what you find is generations underneath us, alpha generation, being like, "How do y'all make it?" We're like, "Wait, when I figure it out, I'll let you know." Because they're paying attention to what we're doing, and then they leave.
Let me ask you, how do you challenge the power dynamics without being blacklisted?
You have to be in spaces of power. That's the only way. I think that is the, that's why I said, I think it is important that more of us are aspiring to professional spaces of power where we can sit at the table and speak to, like you said, speak truth to power. I think the only reason why sometimes people can't deny my voice is because I know who I am. And also, I have really good credentials to back up what I'm saying. I might tell you a joke, but I'm not gonna tell you a lie. And when I'm speaking up about issues I'm having, I know it's not just because I'm talking out of turn or because I'm being a rebel without a cause. I got receipts. I always tell my friends, the Lauren, the R in Lauren R. Welch stands for receipts.
Okay, okay.
But we have to be in spaces where we can speak to people who are making decisions. Either we have to be the decision makers or we have to be able to have relationships with people who are making the decisions. Because I also believe in collective power as well. I think when we come together and we speak up about issues, you do have to gather your people. That's why I said at the beginning, you have to know who your people are. Because when we gather together, it's like Enlightened Solutions. We, it's not that we didn't know that this was a bad place for Black women to live in. Actually, Sam Allard at City Year, or City Club, not City Club, excuse me, Sam Allard at Cleveland Scene Magazine, before he was at Axios, Sam Allard at Cleveland Scene Magazine, before he was at Axios, wrote an article, I think it was in 2013 or 2014. I was like, Cleveland is a great place unless you're black. And then years later, the City Lab article came out about how this was the worst place for black women. And I started an organization in 2014 where I was listening to black women. I knew it was bad then. It's how you galvanize people to bring light to an issue that makes a difference. So I think, one, again, we have to be in position, positions of power. Or we have to know people in positions of power, or we need to galvanize, or all three, in order to really make a difference. But you cannot be on the sidelines. You cannot just be at home and just tweeting away. It does take some knowing your neighbors, getting in the streets, talking to people about what's going on. If we really want to see any change in our communities.
So do you think the younger generation is just too sensitive? And the older generation is just too comfortable with that toxic environment that they were raised on?
Now you sound like my mama.
I say all the time, y'all too soft. But I think that's, I always tell people the, I tell the older folks, I said, the problem with our generation is, our generation, we're the fathers and mothers of these kids. Y'all like our grandparents. Yeah, I said, they get along with old, y'all get along with old people. It's just, in our age bracket, there's a problem right there. And it's always that. So do you think you're just a little too sensitive?
I think what it is, because we're talking, having more conversations about inclusion. I think that we just want to be included more. And I, when I, from my own personal experiences, when I've had conversations with old heads. Really, what I've learned is that you all did not have to, y'all didn't have conversations about the LGBTQ plus community. Ways to include them in the same ways that we're having it. Not that you didn't, we're just having it in a different way. Or accessibility terms and terminologies that are coming up that we are often bringing to the table because they're important. And so when y'all say the wrong pronouns, when y'all come to the table, y'all, I just gotta keep y'all head down. I didn't want you to keep your head down, though. Imagine what would have happened if y'all had have been empowered to not keep your head down. What would have come of that? What would have come if you felt more included in workplaces and you weren't told to just take a backseat?
But to that point, they did. They fought to get you able to get in that seat in the first place. So they didn't take that thing of doing that. I think what it is, where we failed a little bit, is that exact thing that we're telling you is because of the reason why I believe this generation is soft. Is because, and this is why we're here to talk, is because we tried to protect you. We should not have protected you. Should have told you, yeah, go on and fight. So that if you lose your job, you lost your job. If you don't get what you get out of, you got what you fought. But what we're doing is like we always did, which is why we say y'all generation is soft. We protect.
Which there's nothing wrong with protection. I want to make that very plain and clear. There's nothing wrong with protection. But a lot of y'all did lose jobs, right? Yeah, exactly. But y'all are just passing the torch to us. We're just fighting in a different way. Y'all fought in y'all way. We're just fighting in completely. We have more access to social media. We have more access to the information than y'all did. And so we cannot deny that access to social media, to Google, to, and, and we have access to other people who are fighting in different places in America, different parts of the world. So where y'all just had newspapers, y'all heard about the civil rights movement, y'all saw what was happening. If you picked up a newspaper, if you're talking to the neighbors, if you're talking to your friends, you knew what's happening. Now, I can see what Tarana Burke is doing in New York. I can see what folks are doing in LA. I can see what people are doing in Chicago. You understand what I'm saying? And so now we're like, oh, they doing it over there like that?
But that, that right there again, was a plus. It, it is a knife that cuts both ways.
Sure is.
And the reason why I say that is, back in those days where you did have to go to the meeting. Where you did get the information from your neighbors, the information was a little bit better. It was, even though you can tell somebody one thing and they'll change it, but for the most part, it was alright. With the thing with social media now, and it's so wide open, is what do you believe and what you don't believe?
I agree with that, though.
And then, and, but I always tell people, because of what's going on now. Because I'm hit with the generation of, hey, we need to meet. We should have a meeting. We should have a meeting. How come we don't have these meetings where we all can get together and talk? And I'd be like, I think people rather meet on their phone and they want to meet when they can meet. I like to meet at three o'clock in the morning. So I, I got nothing. I like to see what happened at the meeting, see what, and I can get my information. So having that convenience is there, but it cuts both ways again. Because it was something about the fact that you did have to go to the meeting. You did get the information and it kept you involved. So we have people who are less involved and as I like to call you guys, keyboard warriors.
There is some of that. I will, as somebody who works in social media advocacy, I will tell you. Again, as somebody who loves social media, I also believe that we've lost receipts when it comes to media literacy. I think that we're struggling in that, when it comes to people having discernment about what's actual facts versus what's opinions. And that does take some literacy. We have to teach people across the aisle, across generations, about how to do critical thinking or how to have some critical thinking around what they're seeing on the internet. Cause even old heads is looking on Facebook and, did you hear this thing?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, it's like now with everything that's going on, I mean, with Trump and all that. So my wife would be sitting there and she'd be listening to stuff and I'd look at her, I'd say, that's AI, right? She'd be like, for real? I was like, yeah. She, how can you tell? And I'm like, I gotta show you, listen, just kind of listen, look at the words, look at it. That's AI. You can tell. But it's like that.
It is like that.
So my generation, again, now we're getting caught up because she's not into this stuff like this. So it's, do I believe what they just said or that kind of thing?
But that's like I said, I get, I still go back to you have to find your people. You have to find your community. I feel very blessed to have people who are in the know, on the pulse. When it comes to what's happening locally, regionally, around the country. And so I'm always asking a lot of questions like, I read this thing that's happening, give me context to this. So I'm not just speaking out of turn when it comes to things. And I tell people, no matter how old they are, I'm like, you should ask more questions.
And you know what? Speaking of AI, it got me the other morning. I woke, cause I wake up early. So I was up about five o'clock in the morning, getting dressed. And I went to YouTube and it was a thing on there that says, Usher testifies at puffy trial. And I hit it. And I'm listening to this and it went on for about thirty, forty minutes. And I, again, I was like, damn, Diddy ain't never getting out of jail. I mean, God, did you hear all of this stuff? I'm going through all of this and everything, going back and forth. And I tell my wife now, she's following this trial. And so after it was all over with, she looked at me and she said, that was AI, don't you? I said, really? She said, Usher haven't even testified yet. Thank God, because what they just said over here, if Usher say any of that stuff. That brother ain't never getting out of jail. My God, it was terrible. But to that point, I think that's where we at with just trying to get our generation and your generation up to speed. Is there any steps that you believe should be taken in order for us to try to bridge the gap? How can you think we bridge this gap or is just something that just gonna have to play itself out?
No, I think more seasoned individuals should find mentors. Not just people who they can get something out of, but find people that you can really lift as you climb. I also think that a lot of us who are younger could do a better job of reaching out. I have a mentor and she would be like, you're the first person to reach out to me. I get a bunch of white kids always asking me for advice. Calling me constantly. And she works for a national organization. And we just, again, it's something that I think we have to do more of. We have to reach out. We have to. I, I believe in, I'm not an island.
That's correct.
I do not think that you can build community by yourself. And I don't think that you can be a better person if all you're doing is looking in your own mirror every day. I think that my friends, I think that my chosen family, I think that individuals I choose to surround myself of are really reflections of me, but I'm also reflections of them. And so I'm constantly learning, paying attention, looking at what they're doing, looking at how they're moving, shifting how I tackle things. Because I feel like I have some good people around me who are doing that. And we're in this time and space because of social media, where like you said, people are not talking to their neighbors anymore. They're not talking to seasoned generations. They're going to work, they're going home. And then they're just go, and I don't blame people for that because it's exhausting. After the pandemic, I think like people got really burnt out or felt like what we were doing this ways in which we were moving through life was really burning everybody out. And so I think people are trying to recalibrate. But aside from that, we do have to do a better job of just working across the aisle, having conversations like this. Listen, I learned a lot. Listen, I'm always taking mental notes around what your generation is talking about, how you're talking about it. Because it's not, even though y'all think we sensitive, it's not like we don't learn from you.
Let me ask this question.
My mentor would always say, take what you need and leave the rest. You know what I mean? I'm taking it. I'm not using everything, because it might not apply. But it's not, some of us are listening. I'm listening.
So let me ask you a question then. Cause this is what we face a lot of dealing with, especially being an employer and out here trying to find business. Is the, what I'm finding a lot of from this generation that I, I think that gives us all the pauses of everything that we have and all the anxiety of that is finding people who say they can do what they can do. Now, in your generation, I think is where the older generation has receipts, to your point. They can show receipts because they have a track record of showing where they worked at, what they've done and all the other. What I found to be a problem for me, and I'm saying this in the last four years, four to five years. Is finding millennials or folks who, one, who believe that, I say, pay you what you worth. And you're worth what you think you're worth versus is totally different. And I understand. Cause I got kids who came out of college and everything. And yes, you can walk out here and get some good jobs that are paying a lot of money to do what you're gonna do. But you gotta be able to do what you say you can do. And my issue with the millennials, and I just keep it 100, is that they can't do what they say they can do. They say they marketers, they don't. They say they social media, this and that, because they come in the door thinking, oh, he's an old head. He don't know social media. And I know everything about social media. And, and it be that kind of thing. So it's the resistance and it's that. So how do we, or what would you, how would you want us as, how you speak to my generation about how you want us to deal with you guys as it relates to that?
I'll tell you the same way I tell my clients, you have to do your homework on people. Can't, no matter who you are, when you're hiring people, and I'm really big proponent of this. You have to sometimes make a couple of phone calls. What was your experience working with this person? Where's your portfolio? What's your body of work look like? I've experienced that too. I had an example where I brought on a young lady. And she had just graduated. And I was, simple stuff. I need some research on some reporters out of Chicago. You give me a Word document back with three contacts on it. In my day, getting older, or when I graduated from undergrad, that was unacceptable. You were, and this is, and in twenty, even in 2010, we still didn't have the internet like we have the internet now. So there was a lot of work, legwork that had to be done to find contacts, to build databases, to build press releases. To figure out who's talking about what. And while I hated it at the time, what it taught me was the mechanics of how you do the job. When I was running and getting coffees for the PR agency, I thought I was so high. I got a degree. I don't know why I'm doing it. What it taught me was how you build client relationships, right? I'm getting the coffee because we want it ready for the person before they get to the door, not when they get there, right? That's how you build work ethic. That's how you build a business acumen, right? I learned those things. What I'm realizing is, because of social media, because of the internet, because everything is so accessible. People have lost, and it, and it's different ages, but people have lost, like this young lady unfortunately, how to do the dirty work in the work that we're doing. No, it's not. Even when you put things in AI, if you're not putting it in with a creative eye or putting it in with the right wording. It's just gonna come out as, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
As just something.
That's correct.
And how to do it, if you're gonna use AI effectively. But that requires not just critical thinking, it requires you to understand how to do research. How to build a narrative. And these are skills.
Those are the skills that I'm saying, that when you come in the door, I expect you to have. The other stuff that, how I do work, how we do, that's the training part of it. But I shouldn't have to tell you how to research. I shouldn't have to tell you how to formulate a sentence, how to put this stuff together. And you always, and even where I tell millennial, anybody who comes to a new job, you have to find a way to elevate your job. If you're just coming to work every day and you're just doing your job, then that's good if you're working for a multimillion dollar company that's making widgets. Because they just want you to come every day, sit behind a machine and make widgets. But if you're working for a small business and you're trying to grow, you have to be creative. And you have to, and not creative in creative in your marketing, creative in all the stuff you do. And I think that's where I'm falling short. I'm so old, I tell people.
You are not that old.
I was just saying, I call it so old, I remember when. I like to go there because my generation understands this. My first business I did, I had a mortgage company. And we used to have to put our ads in the yellow pages and the white pages. And so that meant you had to be.
When you flip to the, when you flip to the front or the back.
Oh, yeah. If you was in, my company was called Absolute. I went with Absolute because it was AB. I wanted to be at the beginning, in the front of the beginning of the yellow pages. You'd have been all the way through the back and how they did it. So I wanted that. And that's where, back in the day, people used to put in ads, construction, construct, all of that kind of stuff to be at the front. We used to also have to draw, literally draw our ads of mortgages and stuff that you wanted to put in into the newspaper. So having that experience, switching from that to getting into graphic design to where we is, gives you all of those understandings of what you were talking about, the mechanics of why things work the way it is. Now, I don't expect a millennial or someone coming out of college or something to have all of that. But when they come in the door, they swear.
They swear. But I also think that speaks to, I don't know, the opposite side of that honestly, Ken, is I've been with people who don't know anything about marketing and then they hire people and then they think that the people who they've hired are really good. And I'm like, that's not really great marketing. But how are you supposed to tell companies in Cleveland, that's not good marketing? If they don't, that's all they know. So they've been able to get away, it's an industry problem here in northeast Ohio. A lot of individuals have been able to get away with not so great marketing. Because we're not a marketing city. Unless you've seen good publicity or you've seen good marketing or you've seen it at a really high level. You're okay with, oh, it got out. And then you see people like us and we're looking at it like, that's the, okay, but that's the.
There's very, like you say, you can look at a few people who say, you know what, their marketing is great. I'll tell you one person who I think got very great marketing. The Word Church.
Is the marketing. And then they got a podcast. They've got the books. And then they've got, listen, I, one thing I cannot deny is that they're really good at the marketing.
Really good at that. I go on social media.
They got the billboards. That's the tactic, right? You have to be, you have to look at even the church as a business.
What's his name? The first, is it Shakur? The quarterback we got, Sanders. Shakur, I say his name. I always get it mixed up with Shiloh. No, it's Shakur, right? Soon, as the Browns went ahead and drafted him, Bishop Vernon. Yeah, Vernon was on, on it saying, hey, we welcome you to Cleveland. Biggest black church we got there. And he know that Deion and them are religious like that. What he do? He gives a big welcome to and telling the guy, I said, oh my God. I'm like, this guy is on everything, everything.
I remember coming, but I remember being 24, 25, moving back with that level of strategy, hitting a wall. Because people were just like, they didn't do it that way. So why do we have to? And now it's interesting, I kid you not. I kid you not, it's interesting now seeing old heads now getting into it and seeing how it's important.
That's correct.
Because it's important for your business to thrive. You need good marketing.
That's correct. They weren't ready for it.
They weren't ready for it.
It's Cleveland. It's typical Cleveland where we always behind the eight ball, waiting on something to happen. And then once it comes out, we always behind every other big city.
I make this joke all the time. I'm like, I can't wait to be 50 and people just take my word for it.
You know what?
And I hate to say that.
Fifty, it's gonna be lovely. Cause they take my word for it now. So that's what I'm trying to tell you. It's gonna be lovely for you.
But people are like, oh my goodness, is it crazy being on the RTA board? Cause we serve 66 cities. It's the largest agency. We employ a number of people. I'm like, I honestly could have done this three years ago if people hadn't just paid attention to the things that I was saying about having writers on the board. We weren't there yet. But I, I could have done everything that I'm doing years earlier. But the space wasn't ready for it, right? And so I make that joke, because I'm like, even, what, who were we talking about? We were talking about Randy B. Shepard had to make the speech at the city club. Like y'all calling, still calling him young professional at 50. And I'm like, but at least he's getting, at least they listening. And I'm like, this is when we talk about progressive Cleveland. I'm like, ah, it's progressive in the sense that we're trying to get there. Like we're legalizing a lot of things. We're changing our systems. We're getting there. But imagine 10 years ago, I was living in LA, we already did that a long time ago. For me, I understand that I'm like, ugh, yeah, it took 10 years. And other people is, I'm so excited because we're finally getting it. I'm in both, I'm in both spaces. I'm happy that we're moving things ahead. But we could have moved things ahead a long time ago, had we just listened to a couple of people.
I call it Mayberry. I said, y'all guys don't know. I said, this is Mayberry. Y'all just don't know it. Like you say, we're a big little city.
We're a big little city.
Little city, Mayberry when we want to be, because we are really a small town with a lot of small traditions and cultures. That's all in one little place. A big little city, Mayberry when we wanna be, because we are really a small town with a lot of small traditions and cultures that's all in one little place. And everybody keeps to their own, and I think that's, is, is it a good thing? No, but that's just what Cleveland is, and the reason why we know it's not a good thing is because of all the challenges that we just talked about. And all of that has to do with the fact that there's very little collaboration with each other on some of the stuff we wants to do.
Or we haven't learned how to have conversations, very hard conversations. I, I, I stick by this, I think that there are people, even in y'all generation, y'all still holding on to grudges from people y'all beefing with in your twenties, and I'm like, we gotta do better.
Oh, yeah, oh, no.
I'm not saying we all gotta get along, but it, it just gets to a point where it's like, but how much is too much? How do we bridge the gap? How do we make amends? How do we move forward? And my generation is honestly taking a nod from that, cuz I'm seeing this happening in real time, I'm like, we got to do better, we gotta do better, because if we want Cleveland to be great, it's dependent on our ability to work together. And listen, plenty of people didn't get along, W D. DeBois didn't get along with Frederick Douglass, okay? Richard Pryor was beefing with a bunch of different people, okay?
You say Rich Pryor.
Lots of beefs, lots of beefs. Okay, but everybody has a space in the movement, right? And so I'm just continue to think about that when it comes to people like, I'm always prayer jabass. I'm like, listen, enlarge my territory, but allow me not to cause harm along the way, if I do, allow me to have enough humility to make up for it. Because I just think that if we want better for the city, that's how it's gonna happen. We have to be able to put aside some of our differences, especially when there are people trying to create change. We have to put aside some of this, so we, our people can get what they need, they can get access and opportunities.
What do you think situation that you believe right now is serious that you think Cleveland is sleeping on, right?
Oh, yeah. I think that we are sleeping on the unhoused. I know that our administra- current local administration is doing everything they can to get people sheltered, but I think we need to have a lot more conversations around how to get people the help that they need. I think we need to have more conversations about how white supremacy shows up in our personal and professional lives. I think that sometimes we think because we're a segregated city, that black people cannot be types of people that perpetuate white supremacy, but we can, I think we're behind in that conversation, and so I wanna have, I think we should be having more conversations about how to dismantle white supremacy in our personal and professional spaces. And we need to do a better job of supporting women, like I specifically am here for black women, but I think women in general just need more support in these spaces. Especially as we're thinking about how they're stripping back laws, or at least attempting to in Ohio. I think women are just gonna need way more support in, in the next decade, they always, we can always use as much support as possible, but definitely more support. And our children, our children, I think children are most marginalized individuals, and they are an afterthought. And we have to set up spaces for them to succeed, and we gotta do better, we gotta do better.
So what you think, when it's all said and done, and you finish this out and you get my age or older, what kinda legacy do you want to leave here in Cleveland, what kinda mark you trying to leave here in Cleveland? You could say, you know what, I'm glad I did that, and this is where I wanna leave my mark.
I always hope that even in today, I'm leaving behind that it's important for you to just show up as authentic as you are in these spaces. Show up, advocate for yourself, advocate for your community, because like you said earlier, we're passing a torch. I hope to one day be able to be in Greece in a boat with my friends. And being able to reap the fruits of my labor, because I come from a long line of black women, and those women came from other black women. And I don't wanna have to take on all the labor for the rest of my life, I wanna be able to pass that along, have some section planning, not hold positions for the next twenty years and not bring up people with me, what I'm trying to say. And so that's the legacy I'm trying to live, leave behind, a legacy where I'm able to be myself when I show up to these tables and create spaces where other people can show up as themselves. A legacy where we have some boundaries around what labor we're giving to these spaces. And I don't know, I think liberation is gonna be in the hands of those who are prioritizing community. The only way to get to liberation is thinking about somebody other than ourselves. And so I hope that when people see my work and they see what I do, and say, Lauren was Lauren through and through, she won opportunities for other people, not just herself, and she had fun along the way. Cuz that's important as well, I think that a part of the resistance is rest and joy. So that's what I'm hoping to not only just leave behind, but also I hope that's showing up in my daily life as well.
That's good, Lauren.
I'm trying my best, I really am, Ken.
You awesome, you gonna be alright.
Okay, if you say it, I trust it.
I'm, I'm a talent scout.
Yeah.
I know good people, and I see good things coming your way.
Thank you, I receive that.
Right attitude about it, and, and I think you're going about it the right way.
It's hard.
Oh, I was gonna say, it's cool, I was just about to say, it's gonna be a journey for you, it's not gonna be easy, but you get through it, you gonna be alright.
Yeah, I think, I'm, I think I try, I've gotten better over the years about just taking a beat. There's a lot of things going on in different spaces that are challenging, but I've found that I've just, if I take a beat and approach those spaces with a level of care, I get better outcomes than just going into them guns blazing.
No, and I, I think you're in a very good niche.
Yeah.
In a good niche.
But sometimes you need to at least have the threat of a gun.
Yeah, well, you do.
Just to move a needle, ain't nothing wrong with the threat of one.
No, you know what, they say you don't pull one unless you gonna use it.
Hey, yeah. That's the Cleveland coming out, that's the Cleveland through and through, I'm like, don't let the hills pull you now, I'm from Cleveland.
That's what I'm saying, you gonna be fine, you gonna be fine, I think your niche where you at, I think that your generation of what's coming up with the generation to come of new leadership and others that you find yourself. One thing about Cleveland is that a lot of their, the opportunities for the future is there.
Yeah, I agree with that, I do.
So where, where there's people like yourself and others that might be in that space, they limited, yeah, yeah. One thing's for sure, you're usually your best friend at this point, so then, keep yourself healthy.
Yes, yes.
Keep yourself healthy, as long as you can stay healthy. And what's crazy is that was the same model that I had to take with a lot of other folks, I was just like, you know what? At some point, I got into business, like, I just gotta outlive them.
Yeah.
I just, I hate to be that way, I hate in my mind, but it was like, hell, I got three or four people in this space that I really wanna do something at, and they're getting all the work and they just getting it, and to your point, age seventy, eighty years old, I'm like, come on. So it was like, you know what, brother, you gonna have to just sit back, try to take care of yourself and stay healthy so that you can maybe outlive them to be able to get it. So I tell you the same thing, that in your space, you just keep doing what you're doing, because some of the people in your space say, oh, we getting old.
Cause I'm still surpassing people, I, the game even ten years ago has changed.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, it hasn't changed, and I'm not saying that we're done, but I'm just saying that the opportunity there for you, and you have the wa- wisdom enough to connect yourself with the right people to build your network, so I think you'll be fine.
I appreciate that.
So we want to thank you for coming on our program, as always, you did a great job, and we wanna have you come back and sit on some panels and continue to talk with us as we go. We're gonna let you have this camera here, Lauren, cuz I want you to take your time, say something to the camera, give the people a little inspiration. But also make sure you leave how they can contact you, how they can get in touch with you, your website, all of that stuff, and about your agency. So take your time, that's you.
I'm Lauren R. Welch, you can follow me on all social platforms at Miss MS Lauren R. Welch. I also own a business PR and advocacy company called Laurel Cadence, you can follow Laurel Cadence at www.loralecadence.com and on Instagram at Laurel Cadence, if you wanna see some of the clients, keep pushing, you got this.
Excellent, I wanna say this, Lauren's story reminds us of leadership isn't just a position, it's responsibility. To everyone listening, understand this, respect isn't optional, it's fundamental. Stop asking permission and take your space in the room where you belong. Don't stay silent, don't play safe, do what's, do what you need to do to make sure you keep fighting for what's right. Till next week, we wanna talk to you again, we'll see y'all, peace.